I call this meeting to order. Please stand and salute the flag.
With allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which we stand, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Today is August 29th. The time is 6:10. And we are about to start basically what you'd say, preview to coming attraction or next beginning of a new class here 2024-2025. In accordance with the Open Public Meeting Act, Chapter 231, adequate notice of this meeting has been provided as follows. On January 10, 2024, notice was sent to the Home New Tribune, Star Ledger, Tappo Pinter Linden, Union County Local Source, and Clerk of the Municipality. By state law, there is no smoking permitted in this building at any time. In addition to the listed items in this agenda, this Board of Education may discuss and act upon other items not specifically referred to hearing as is allowed at a regularly scheduled meeting under the Sunshine Law. Your call?
Mr. Dela Cruz.
Here.
Ms. Pino.
Present.
Ms. Thomas.
Present.
Ms. Yulise.
Present.
Ms. Armstead.
Present.
Ms. Carrillo. Ms. Centron. And Dr. Burghammer.
Present.
Our next agenda item is approval of minutes.
Motion to approve the minutes of the work session held on July 23rd, 2024, and the regular meeting held on July 25th, 2024.
Second.
Mr. Dela Cruz.
Yes.
Ms. Pino.
Yes.
Ms. Thomas.
Yes.
Ms. Yulise.
Yes.
Ms. Armstead.
Yes.
Comments from the public. Members of the public desiring to make a public comment may come forward at this time. For those watching online, if you wish to make a comment or ask a question, please utilize the raise your hand feature on the online meeting platform. Please begin your comments by stating your name and address. Individuals are invited to speak on one topic at a time, and no individual will speak more than once until all individuals so desiring have spoken once. The public is reminded that to ensure the efficient and orderly operation of the meeting, members of the public will be limited to speaking on agenda items for three minutes. Do you have anyone online? Okay. Before the superintendent report, I'd like to say something. We had an awesome 2024. A lot occurred. We have had, we started with a scholarship of 12 million. We end up with 17 million students getting scholarships. We had over 90% of our students actually graduated from high school. We hired a lot of new people. We hired Mr. Walker, who is an amazing assistant superintendent. Of course, we have our superintendent, Mrs. Perkins, who also, for our first year as superintendent, have done extremely well. And her right hand, who walked with her hand in hand for the entire year, Ms. Annabelle Lewis. I also want to thank, I also want to take this time to thank my board members. Believe it, being a member of this board or any board is a heavy lift. For many nights, the board members sitting here still 10, 11 o'clock at night, trying to solve problems. So you know, there is a lot of saying, the stuff that you do behind the scene where nobody is watching, those are the stuff that really matters. Because when you come in front of the scene, everything that happens behind the scene is taken care of. But the real hero of the last year was our staff, was our, our people who worked to get our buildings ready. We have so many of our schools that now have central air condition. We have marquees in front of our schools. We have playgrounds almost in every school. We have teachers that were promoted. We have staff that is doing very well. We have won championships award. We have students that competed in different states. And we came out of all these activities triumphant. 2023, 2024 was a good year for our students. And I want to give everyone in our school district a hand. Now, we are getting into the year 2024-2025 school year. And we still have a lot of work to do. But this year, we have someone that we have recently hired, in fact, two people that we recently hired that this board is counting on to help us. One of the people that we have recently hired that we are counting on is our publicist. This Board of Education has hired a publicist because we are dead set on connecting our school district with the community. I want you to give our publicist a hand. The next person I want to recognize who is going to help move our school district forward is our Personnel Director. Of course, you guys know that we have a lot of problems. School districts all around the country are suffering. We are struggling to get the right teachers in our classrooms because we want to make sure that our classrooms are filled at all time. So we hired a publicist, a Personnel Director, that is going to help make it all possible. So not only are we going to fill up our classrooms with good qualified teachers, we're going to make sure we are not going to run this year with 30% of our teachers' subs. We're going to make a difference this year. I want everyone to give a good hand to our new Personnel Director, Dr. Lot. And last but not least, we have again our administrative team. We have our Finance Director, who again is making miracles happen. We have done so much in the last year and did not increase any taxes. We have, we have Mr. Serapilia, who is our Finance Director. He actually got Employee of the Year last year because he didn't raise no taxes and he did so much for us. And we have our superintendent and his staff that work long hours trying to get stuff done. I want to let you know, as a board president, I am tough. And I do not know how they put up with me a lot because I have so much expectation. And I drive them because I want the best. I want everybody, whether you are school crossing guard or a superintendent, I want everybody to be successful. This is what we, not I, but this is what our board wants. I want to thank every one of you guys for coming here today. And I look forward, and this Board of Education, look forward to a remarkable 2024-2025 school year. Thank you. Our next report is our superintendent's report.
Thank you, Madam President. Good evening. So you shared a lot about as we closed out the school year and we prepare for the new school year. So I want to start with just saying thank you to our 12-month staff for helping us carry out the summer and get prepared for the school year. 12-month staff consists of our Custodians, Secretaries, Payroll, Benefits, Transportation, Administrators, and all the members of the Board Office. I always get an opportunity to shout out the superintendent's team, the Confidential Secretary, Ms. Donna Popoff, and then the other secretaries in the department. So we just want to say thank you for a job well done. Our buildings and grounds look great as we prepare for the school year. To our supervisors over our facilities, you know, we did walks around the buildings and we are ready to go. As teachers are coming in these next few days, just know we thank you for your commitment to service, support staff as well. All members of the LEA, we appreciate you as we believe the mission possible. I will be showing, having two presentations this evening. One is for the Access Testing Administration, which is a state requirement to share out the results of the administration, as well as the New Jersey GEPA Administration, which is the New Jersey Graduate Proficiency Assessment. We are also very thankful for, as we prepare and think about diversity, it's on the agenda this evening, that we're honoring Spanish Heritage Month. So we'd like for you all to get involved and understand that as a diverse population, we believe in unity for the community. Summer schools have come to an end and we had a successful school year, from STEM to multilingual language learning support to enrichment as well as remediation. So thank you to those staff and coordinators and also building principals and vice principals for ensuring that the programmings were run successfully as well as orientations that have taken place. I will be sending a letter out to all employees over the next few days, just to let you know that it is so the time to get ready, but also to enjoy the upcoming Labor Day holiday. To all members of the board, thank you for carrying us through through the summer as well as preparing for this school year. As Dr. Burghammer, you just stated, the commitment is like no other. So your time and dedication is truly valued. So I'm going to ask at this time, if I'm going to connect to the screen here, and I will begin the presentations. The first, it's not a presentation, as you can move and get ready, but the first video I will be showing, it is coming from our Linden Media Department. And we are so thankful that, as Dr. Burghammer stated, our publicists and our Linden Media Department are working very hard in showcasing who we are and where we are going as a district. So the video I will be showing just got publicized yesterday and it is called Linden Mission Possible.
When, the good news or the bad news?
There's no such thing as bad news in our land of work. Our attention to excellence is what puts us in a position of power. What is the status?
Well, we have photos from the LPS Administrator's Retreat. Their focus is Mission Possible.
In preparation for the new school year, why didn't we see this coming?
We have video from Sardu's cloud, right from the retreat. So here's Sardu's footage of the admin going right into the retreat.
Freeze it right there. It's David Walker and Annabelle Lewis. They're always trying to make an impact with the kids.
Sardu even tried to go inside, but Agent Walker stopped him at the door.
When is Sardu going to get here?
Well, that was the bad news I wanted to tell you about.
They got him. I told them to be careful. All right, we're going to have to put together an extraction team to get him out of there.
No, there's no need for that. He actually joined them. All these videos, this up close? I mean, he's going rogue.
Linden Public Schools always making a difference. Who's the head of this operation?
Let me see. All right, I got it. This looks like Agent Superintendent Perkins. According to the top-secret folder we found, her vision is to ensure student success by enhancing systems and structures and sustained accountability.
Roar.
Come again.
Roar. Linden Public Schools are tigers. She's committed to excellence through R, resilience; O, opportunity; A, achievement; R, relationship.
Sir, there's nothing we can do. Their Mission Possible operation is in effect and their district is in for a successful awakening.
And I'm sure the community is going to be fully on board. Shut it down. Case closed. Linden's going to roar like they've never roared before.
Agents, are we live?
Yes, we are. We have one minute before they lock in on your location.
Hello, Linden families. Now is the time for us to stand up against systems of mediocrity. We will no longer stand by and allow our students and schools be anything less than their greatest potential. Now is the time. If you are watching this video, we need you to help make a difference. I am now empowering all of us with the roar it takes to make this mission possible. Agents, are you ready to screenshot these four points? Are you ready?
I've intercepted the satellite and the files are ready.
R, resilience. Don't give up. Resilience is our superpower. O, opportunities. Don't settle. Be curious and ask questions. A, achievement. Inspire hope. Unlock peak performance. R, relationships. Be kind and make connections with those around you.
Agent Perkins, get out of there. The school year is about to start.
Tell everyone you know. Don't let anything or anyone stop you. Remember, Linden Tigers. We are in this together. This Mission Possible task will take us to new heights. So I'd like to thank again our Linden Media Team for producing what we believe is part of the future where we're going. It's real-life experiences that video captured our Administrator's Retreat that took place the week of the 12th, where we came together to look at policies, expectations, and student achievement to push forward. Our Mission Possible will continue and be heard throughout the school year. And we are excited. And I want to say thank you to the two actors in the video. They were true actors. And they're actually alum of the Linden Public Schools. And that is, their names are Tiffany Johnson and Jeff Haversock, class of 2001, I believe. And they were given a script and they carried out the assignment. So for those of you watching, and we're excited to bring our students along this journey with showcasing videos as such, the bottom line is, the Mission Possible for Linden Public Schools is going to be seen and heard out the 2024-25 school year. So now I'm going to move on to access. Am I ready? Is this? The access presentation. Access Assessment is for ELLs and it's called Access ELL 2.0. And it measures the academic language based on the WIDA English Language Standards for our students. And the academic language is seen in social instruction. It's seen in language arts. It's seen in math, science, and social studies. So all of our students in grades K through 12 had to take the access test if they were identified as ELL students. They take the test every fall of the school year and it is part of state and federal requirements that they are involved in taking this test. The overall data of the test is to measure how students are progressing in their language. And our goal as a district is to use this data to see how we can then support them throughout the school year. I'd like to thank our World Languages Department, starting with the Director of World Languages, Ms. Dani Orlean. She has helped to put this presentation together, but more importantly, the standards and expectations for teaching and learning of our students. And to all of the teachers and the support staff who helped with carrying out what we need. And the first piece of this is that the access test is broken down into scores. And the scores range from 1 through 6. And the students are then expected to fall into a category if they are entering into the language acquisition, a number one, if they're If they're emerging, a number 2. Developing, a number 3. Expanding in the language, a number 4. Bridging, language, number 5. And lastly, reaching the language expectations is a number 6. The scores are based off of the WIDA English proficiency levels. And the proficiency levels describe what each student can do in categories that are aligned to listening, speaking, reading, and writing. Again, the scores range from 1 to 6. We had 922 students last year who tested for the ACCESS test. 510 were elementary, 184 were middle school, and 228 were high school students. As you can see, most of our ML population are on the elementary level. So here's what the data looks like when we're trying to disaggregate where we're going and how to help our students. So from the far left, it starts with kindergarten and those bars indicate where are our students at. The blue indicates that they're entering compared to green, reaching. As you can see, we're talking about kindergartners with language proficiency. It is a large number. 86% of students are still in the emerging. Compared to if I had to go to 9th grade, 15% are emergent and you see more in the green, which are in the reaching level. So we're really excited, I'm sorry, in the developing level. We're really excited that we are seeing growth. And now I'm going to just break the data down a little bit more by grade levels, gender, ethnicity, and also for each section. Before I get into that, I'd like to show, share with you how we did from last year. So, and students were tested in comprehension. We saw more students are making growth in comprehension from 3.2 to 3.9. In the listening section of the test, from 4.1 to 4.6. Literacy, 2.6 to 3.1. Oral language, we went up from 3.2 to 3.6. Reading, 2.8 to 3.4. Speaking, 2.7 to 2.9. Writing, 2.6 to 3.0. And composite, 2.8 to 3.2. As you can see, we've made growth over the year in every single one of the sub-scores for the different sections that the students were tested on. So now if we break it into grade-level clusters, from kindergarten to 5th grade, we see that 40% of the students, 203, are still entering into that language acquisition compared to 44%, or 21 students are in the expanding range. When we look at grades 6 through 8, the high bar, the green, is developing. Those were 88 students who are showing language acquisition as far as developing compared to entering at 40%. So now in 9th grade through 12th grade, 24% were in the entering stage compared to we have one student who fell into the bridging stage, which is one stage away from the highest level. Is this normal data for ML's testing? Yes, it is, because language acquisition comes at different rates and ages. And again, we're talking about students coming in with a different language and they have to master the new language. And so over time, we see a lot of growth in the grade level and we're really proud of the work that they put in. So on all grades, we are seeing that 32% of our students are in the entering stage. 21% are in the emerging. 40% are in the developing. 65, 70, not, sorry, 7% are in the expanding. 1% are in the bridging. And that's our grade-level clusters. When we break it down by race, we see that our race is broken into Hispanic, white, black, multiracial, Asian, and Pacific Islander. So over to the far left, we're showing that, and I'll speak to the green bars which are developing. We have 38% of students who identify as Hispanic are developing compared to 53% white, compared to 31% black, compared to 33% multiracial, compared to 60% Asian, compared to 50% Pacific Islander. When we compare our gender, from girls to boys, we see again focusing on that developing section, 40% of our female students are developing compared to 39% are of male students. And that is because the population varies. The one student who did fall into the bridging is identified as a male. I also like to just pause here and go down to the entering to see that they're not too far apart, 32% female to 32% male. Even though that there is a different number of students, they still fall into that category of developing. So now that we have that data to see exactly where our students fall, to see how we as a district, a department, a classroom, a group of teachers, grade level, of what we can do to help our students continue with language acquisition. The first thing I'd like to speak about is sheltered instruction training, which our district carries out. And structured, sheltered instruction training is a requirement, a state law, that we must provide to our teachers to support our ML population. We also provide support for content areas of math, science, social studies. I have science twice, sorry, and health, and which helps the teachers with language development opportunities. It incorporates language learning objectives that help multilingual language learners practice the language in that language content area. And when the teachers are using the sheltered instruction methodology, it allows them to follow and identify key components to support those ML students. And that's vocabulary, instruction. It is real-life, hands-on learning experiences. It's cultural relevance. All of the data is showing that you identify with students and who they are. They're more comfortable to begin to focus on new beginnings with language acquisition. So building upon students' background knowledge and then language practice opportunities that includes integration of listening, speaking, reading, and writing. They're saying, the research is stating that a student exposed to those four components every day in a content-specific area helps them with language acquisition. And then finally, we provide students with alternative assessments. Because not all students, you know, we have some assessments that are in different languages to help them with being able to read the content and apply their knowledge to the content. We also have a CIF programming. And CIF programming is to identify those students with interrupted formal education. We have a CIF program at school number 4 and Linden High School. And it's our multilingual language learners who attended schools in the United States for less than 12 months upon initial enrollment into our district and they were identified for not being in school for two or more years or that they were below the literacy level in their home language. We also have students who are two years or more below in math due to inconsistent and interrupted schooling before they arrived in the United States. So as a result, we have developed a CIF Extended Day Program at the high school to help support students who fall into this category, as well as at school number 4. Overall, district-wide interventions that are taking place to help support our students with their language acquisition is that we are opening up a multilingual learners' welcome center. And this is to provide comprehensive support to all of the whole child, their families, and as well as in and out of the classroom. We have an ESL before and/or after-school supplemental programs in all of our buildings. We have two part-time bilingual programs at the elementary school. We have new content sheltered instruction classrooms at the high school that are focusing on math, social studies, and science. We had our first new STEAM-based summer program in grades 1 through 11 and we plan to continue with that. Our multilingual learners' coach, instructional coaches are on the agenda to be hired this evening so that they can provide targeted interventions for all multilingual learners. We're continuing with professional development to support teachers of multilingual learners. And we have continuous data analysis of all of our district's benchmark assessments, formative assessments, NJSLA, as well as ACCESS testing. We have instructional leadership teams who look at this data. We have common planning. We have grade-level meetings and Monday meetings where our staff and administrators come together to provide the support and look at the data and make data-driven decisions. We are continuing with professional development to support the program of our students. In our K through 5 classrooms, our HMH Math Program is available in Spanish. Bilingual modifications and tips are found in our ELA and our math curriculums. Bilingual ELA and math teachers receive common planning time in their teaching schedules so that they can come together and look at the whole child and data to make decisions. Our writing curriculum, being a writer, was revised for the 24-25 school year to align with state mandates to support ML learners. And we've increased our aids with bilingual aids to support our students in bilingual classrooms as well as non-bilingual classrooms if the teacher is not serving as a bilingual teacher. Our kindergarten classrooms, all schools receive push-in services for their English language arts instruction. For non-bilingual schools, they follow a push-in model for ELA and math. Our ESL programs at schools 1, 5, and 8 all follow a push-in models in kindergarten. And then grades 1 through 5 will follow a pull-out model for specialized instruction. And that's a small group setting with a bilingual teacher to continue with that specialized instruction. Part-time bilingual programs are at schools number 2, 4, and 10. Bilingual support in general education classes have increased. ESL classes uses an intervention model for all of those levels, 1 through 4, to be able to support the students and those aids are in there to assist them. We have high-intensity programs at schools 6 and 9 that combines daily ESL instruction using a pull-out model. And again, that's going into a small group classroom. We'll be rotating intervention tutoring classes for ELA and math language acquisition and it will continue to follow a pull-out model for ESL. Spoke earlier about that we have the CIF program with students with interrupted formal education at schools number 4 and the high school. So overall, this is what our data looks like that I broke down to you. This will be available to all board members and we'll continue to look at this data in the classrooms as well throughout the department to see where our student achievement levels are. So this isn't an "I gotcha." This is all about their language acquisition and then more importantly, what we need to do as a district to support them. And those interventions that we have in place, as the beginning slide showed, that we have been making growth from year to year with our students building upon their language acquisition. Each parent will receive the individual student report and it breaks down how their children did on the ACCESS Assessment last fall. And that is the ACCESS presentation. Do you have any questions? Okay, there's a black Audi with the trunk open outside if you want to address that.
I only have one, I don't have a question, I have a concern. I think we need to have two models. We supposed to have ELL, which is English language learners. But we also supposed to have a next model. And the next model's supposed to be second language learner. Which means, when I look at this, I think that we are not preparing all our students for the real world. In the sense that granted, we have a lot of the ELL students graduating proficient in English. But not enough English speakers are graduating proficient in a second language. We need to have, all of you guys have young children. Malaysia, how proficient is your son in a second language? How proficient are your children in a second language? The thing is, what I'm saying is that English language learning works. But we also have to have second language learning and a model to track the efficiency and fluency of all our English language speaking children speaking a second language. What do you guys think about that?
I mean, we discussed that before, so I don't think anybody would be opposed to it.
We gotta find a way to make it happen, right? That's all I wanna see.
Great thinking. Because we do have a SILA biliteracy program at our high school, which does provide dual-language not only support, but for students to master a second language. We shared that data out in June that showed that we had an increase in students who became dual-certified in SILA biliteracy. And one of the things that I spoke with Ms. Orlean about in the department, that one of her initiatives and goals is to ensure that we're doing language immersion earlier on in kindergarten, early grades, so that there's a clear pathway for more students to go through the SILA biliteracy. So that initiative is something new that we are looking at to ensure that it's meeting the board's expectation of students graduating with a second language in their back pocket.
I don't want just a second language. I want English students speaking to be able to be proficient in a second language. Whether it's Creole, whether it's Spanish, whether it's Mandarin. I would like to see our English-speaking students be proficient in a second language. We can't, we are not, these students are graduating, but the field is not, is unequal. If we have a certain percentage that could speak more than one language and we only have our English students speaking one language, we are not preparing them to compete globally. And all our children should be prepared to, should be prepared to compete globally.
Yes, and we do offer those, we offer Mandarin, we offer Chinese, I'm sorry, we offer Chinese, we offer Spanish, we offer Creole, Haitian Creole in elementary. And again, that's what we're doing because yes, some students, they come in with a dual language, but we are appealing to additional students because we do want to increase that number of students leaving with the SILA biliteracy. I'll be able to help you. I'll track data to provide to the board. I'll be able to help you, I'll track data to provide to the board.
Thank you.
Okay, so now I am jumping right on to our our high school, right? So annual statewide testing for the New Jersey Growth Proficiency Assessment, NJGPA, is a test that has to be given every year. A couple of years ago, the governor came out with that every student, regardless of a high school's path for graduation, they must take an assessment to show that they are graduation-ready. So the graduation proficiency assessment is given to 11th graders every year in the spring to determine their strengths and weaknesses. So the graduating class of 2025 must pass graduation proficiency assessment in addition to the credit, curriculum, and attendance requirement that our district expects of our students. This is a statewide assessment that was signed into law in July of 2022, and it measures students readiness in English Language Arts and Math. The test aligns to 10th grade ELA state standards and math, Algebra I and geometry standards. When students take the test, they must receive a cut score of 725 in both the ELA and the math assessments. Students take the test in October of their 11th grade year, and if they don't pass the test, then they can take it, if they're in 12th grade, they take the test again. 11th grade students with disabilities who are not eligible for the Dynamic Learning Map Assessment, they have to take the NJGPA assessment. This last bullet is key. As I show you the data, you'll see strengths and weaknesses of who passed, who didn't. But every year, we have 100% pass in rate of students on the NJGAP. If they don't pass it in that October administration, there are pathways available to students so that they can pass the test. So here's the data. So our current 12th grade students who took the test last May in English Language Arts, there were 442 students and 435 in math. Out of those 442 students in English Language Arts, 97 were not proficient and graduation-ready. In mathematics, 309 students of the 435, their test scores indicated that they were not graduation-ready. From last year to this year, the blue line, I'm sorry, state to district, the blue line shows that from last year to this year, the state made 1% growth, but Linden Public Schools made 8% growth, from 70.9% to 78%. If you can see at the end that we're very close to meeting the state proficiency level with passing GAP in English Language Arts. In math, the state was at 55% last year and dropped down this year, whereas we, we were at 26% and we grew to 29%. While the gap between the district and the state is from 54 to 29, I'll share with you interventions that we have in place to decrease that gap. But we did make growth. For English Language Arts, this breaks down by race. How many students were proficient in that test? Our Asian population had eight students, 75% passed. A Black and African American had 150 students, 77% passed. Hispanic Latino had 214 students, 76% passed. And for our white students, 55 students, 83.6% of those students had, were proficient in English Language Arts. In math, our Asian population was at 42.9%. Black and African American was at 25.5%. Hispanic and Latino were at 26%. And for our white population, they were at 43.6%. For ELA by gender, 73.1% of male students were proficient compared to 83.1% of female students. In math, we're very close, 29.4% were male to 28.6% were female. When we compare students with IEPs to non-IEPs in math, 53.6% with IEPs passed to 82.6% were proficient, who were non-IEPs. In math, students with IEPs, 14.7% compared to non-IEPs, 31.6%. When we look at students by economic status, that's free and reduced lunch students, it's very similar. Students who are not economically disadvantaged compared to economically disadvantaged, it's 77.6% to 78.6, 6% as well. In math, non-economic disadvantaged was at 28.1% to economically disadvantaged 30%, again, very close in looking at that data. So what happens again? Reminder that students must meet a cut score of 725 in both ELA and math. So if those students, and I showed the data of how many did not pass, so what do they have? There are three pathways that a student can take in order to pass the assessment, because they have to pass it in order to graduate. So the first pathway is that students are able to retake the assessment. So they take it in the spring of the previous year. If they don't, the scores come out in the summer, and then the students have opportunities to take alternative assessments in the summer or October of every school year, we offer a retake assessment. A second pathway is that students can take the SATs, the ACTs, or other path, other assessments. And if they meet a cut score on those, it will replace the score needed for NJGAP. And then a third pathway is that students can do a portfolio assessment. And during the school year, we offer after-school programming for students to come in, and they have reading and math support where they're given different tasks to complete reading and writing and math. And they put a portfolio together showing that they made proficiency in those areas. So to break down exactly what those pathways were for the second, again, I spoke to ACT, but there's also a test called the Accuplacer, and we are putting that in place. This is the first year that we're doing it. The research shows that the Accuplacer is a more adaptive test to the user, and it will help our ML population and our special education students, as you saw those numbers previously, to help them with passing the graduation assessment requirement. And then the other test I spoke to was SATs. We have the SATs are ran throughout the summer and also fall and winter administration. Students have options of what pathway they would like to take. The third pathway, that portfolio process for ELA, it's demonstrating competency in constructive response tasks. Those are called CRTs in the English Language Arts classrooms. So students are given two grade-level reading passages. One is in literary, it's literary, and one is informational. They'll have to answer multiple choice items, short constructive responses, or open-ended questions. Students will have to complete two writing tasks. And the writing tasks follow the NJELA learning standards. They have an option from informative explanatory, argumentative, or narrative writing pieces. And this will begin in January. For math, it begins in January as well, and they have to demonstrate competency in constructive response tasks, CRTs. And they will focus on mathematical reasoning to express appropriate mathematical reasoning by constructing viable arguments and critiquing the reasoning of others. And that's it, they solve problems and have to explain how they got the answer. The modeling piece applies to that, so they apply their knowledge and skill to solve real-world problems. And they have to engage in that modeling practice to make sense out of when they're solving those problems. Some of the challenges that we saw when the students took the test is chronic absenteeism. This school year, we are focusing on chronic absenteeism in all schools as a district initiative to ensure that students are in school. Another thing we saw was student engagement and test-taking. It looks like a student may have just hit AAAA and not really applied themselves to when they took the test. And so we're going to make sure that we focus on that this year. Last year, we had staff shortages, excuse me, in core content areas at the high school. Math, science, and special education classrooms were not filled with content specialists. We had substitutes because around the nation, there is a teacher shortage. And while we saw earlier that there were more students who were proficient in ELA to math, ELA is a four-year graduation requirement. That means that they're going to go through ELA all four years of high school. Compared to math, it's a three-year graduation requirement. So they have less time in math classes to meet credit requirements compared to math, and compared to ELA. Interventions that will be taking place this school year is targeted interventions for the retake for the fall administration this upcoming October. And that is going to be carried out with department-based professional development focusing on specific targets and ELA standards as well as math. We're providing multi-tiered systems of support in the classrooms to address academics, student wellness, as well as discipline. One of those things to help with chronic absenteeism is that each school will carry out their attendance review teams. And that's going to consist of building administration and social workers where parents and guardians and students will be brought in to talk about chronic, or if there's a pattern with absenteeism, as well as tardiness. We have a response to intervention program for English Language Arts that's going to be focusing specifically to our ML population to help them with pushing through and understanding what's expected on the test. And then we're going to continue to provide programs and interventions to support our students' social and emotional needs. All of the, there's a lot of research out there that says that students are combating more mental illness and concern in 2024 post-pandemic. And so we put strategies in place to help the students. We're going to continue to provide opportunities for our English Language Arts teachers, our math teachers, as well as our special education teachers and ML teachers to come together and to see how else we can help our students and talk about best education practices in the classroom to help them. We are starting an NJGAP boot camp that's going to be centered around center-based instructional strategies in the classrooms. Students are going to be involved in center-based instruction that is targeted to the standards that are for, they need in the grade level. Well, we are also providing support to our ML students. And as earlier, I spoke to the SIF students, and now there's the extended day program at the high school, the sheltered instruction classrooms for math will begin in September. And then we are going to continue to provide sheltered instruction training to teachers so that they can support our ML population. And that is the NJGAP assessment presentation. Are there any questions?
I have a question. What are we doing with the demographic data that was found? So it shows a few growth disparities between ethnicities. So how are we utilizing that data to assist in helping those students in their growth?
So that goes back to the cultural relevant practices. And we're working with our Student Services Department to provide the teachers with more strategies of how to provide cultural relevant teaching practices. Our curriculums are broken down now into resources that are aligned to cultural relevant practices. And our evaluation tool that teachers are going to be evaluated on, they're getting trained on it now of how to support cultural relevant practices. So we, not specifically like, okay, this one population, but overall cultural relevant practices so you can meet the needs of everybody in the classroom.
Thank you.
Come up to the mic. Oh, I'm holding the mic, I'm sorry, you need the mic.
Hello, everyone. My name is Sharita Morgan, I'm PTA president for Linden High School. I was just wondering, what can parents do at home to help their teens prepare for the NJGAP exams? And especially if they failed the first time, if they did not pass, what can parents do at home to, what kind of resources can parents use? And what can they do at home? Yes.
So just like I shared earlier, each parent gets the individual student report that identifies how their child did on the test. So that's the first piece of data so that they know what's available to them. As a district, we provide resources to, through, on our website. Student Services Department provides a lot of different resources to help with social, emotional support as well as providing parents with assistance of how to navigate parenting in 2024 phase. Communicating with our teachers as well as our coaches and building principles to help with students mastering those learning standards. The New Jersey learning standards are online. And if you you put in grade 10 language arts standards, it will say, by the end of this school year, students should know how to complete constructive responses with four pieces of evidence. It gives you step-by-step. But to, the first piece would always be to communicate with your child's teacher. Because those tests, and the guidance counselor, because those test scores were sent to the parents this summer, it begins the process of having that communication with the teacher and the guidance counselor. Those that did not pass it, the administration is in the fall, so there will be paperwork and documents going home once school starts to individualize what we have and how else to support the child. and how else to support the child.
You know, a lot of kids is not really test takers. So what are we gonna do? You know, they get nervous, they fail, and let's say they just don't pass. But you know they can do it. So what are we gonna do then?
So one of the things that, like I said, we saw on there that some are just clicking and not applying. So from day one, we're going to be starting with those conversations of how important it is that they understand they need this test to graduate. All right? So like I said in the beginning too, the numbers kind of show a large group that didn't pass. So we're going to give them these opportunities. October is going to be the retake. If they don't do it, they don't pass it there, then they can move on to the third pathway, which is the portfolio assessment. And then that's when they meet with teachers outside of school hours to help them with completing the task of showing mastery on that grade level standard. So by the time June comes, we will have 100% passing of NJGEPa. We've never had a student not pass NJGEPa by the time June came. Those three different pathways allows, maybe they're just not a good test taker. So that's why they may do the portfolio assessment. Or maybe that test didn't work for them. Maybe they'll do the SAT or the AccuPlacer. So we have different assessments now in place too to ensure that we're meeting the different levels of how students test as well as just the environment overall.
Are the pathways mandatory?
Yes, because they have to graduate. And we don't allow them not to. So, you know, I've spoken to some parents already this summer because there was a SAT administration that just took place across the state. So a student could have taken the SAT and depended on the score there, then that shows that, oh, they are graduation-ready. So it replaces them having to take this again. Before they take that assessment in October, there's going to be that boot camp and strictly hardcore. You have to understand how important this is to pass it. So we're giving them, we're going to give them the support they need. But again, we're also, this is just going to be for those that need to retake it. But then in the spring, the next group is going to be taking it again. So we're just making sure we're going to be targeting them as well.
No more questions? So we ready?
Well, thank you. And that concludes my superintendent's report.
That was very good, very, very informative. Thank you.
All right. At this time, we're gonna move on to the attorney report.
Thank you. I do have one item. It's the sidebar agreement with the LEA that we discussed in closed session. We did get a signed copy of the agreement. That agreement, which John has a copy of, will allow us to...
Wait, wait. Which one?
That agreement will allow us to hire a third-party substance abuse counselor to start immediately. And we'll be making some contractual concessions to the LEA in exchange for them agreeing not to challenge us with respect to the SAC. Again, completely as discussed, on Tuesday, John has the agreement. So I'll ask for a motion in a second to approve that.
Thank you.
Motion to approve the attorney's report.
I'm sorry?
Motion to approve the attorney's report.
Second. Roll call.
Mr. Dela Cruz.
Yes.
Ms. Pino.
Yes.
Ms. Thomas.
Yes.
Ms. Yulise.
Yes.
Ms. Armstead.
Yes.
And Dr. Burghammer.
Yes.
Thank you. Thank you, Sam. Moving on to the education report.
Excuse me. Prior to going over the education report, we do just have one typo on page number 13, item number 15, for the Halloween parade at school number one. That should read October 27th, not December 27th.
That would make sense.
13, where at?
Page 13, number 15, School One Halloween Parade.
Thank you. Thank you for finding it.
Good evening, everyone. Education Committee upon recommendation of superintendents of schools and the assistant superintendent presents the following motions of the Linden Board of Education for approval. I approve item 1 through 51. No, no, I'm sorry. Item 55. I respectfully ask for a second.
Second. Is there any discussion? Roll call.
Mr. Dela Cruz.
Yes.
Ms. Pino.
Yes.
Ms. Thomas.
Yes.
Ms. Yulise.
Yes.
Ms. Armstead.
I would like to recuse myself from agenda items 17, numbers 27 through 30. Yes to all other agenda items.
And Dr. Burghammer.
Yes.
Moving on to the finance report. She's not here. So... The Finance Committee upon the recommendation of the superintendent of schools and the Business Administrator Board Secretary presents the following motions to the Linden Board of Education for approval, items 1 through 55. I respectfully ask for a second.
Second.
Any discussion? No? Roll call.
Mr. Dela Cruz.
Yes.
Ms. Pino.
Yes.
Ms. Thomas.
Yes.
Ms. Yulise.
Yes.
Ms. Armstead.
Yes.
And Dr. Burghammer.
Yes.
Moving on to Buildings, Grounds, and Security.
Buildings, Grounds, and Security Committee upon recommendation of the superintendent of schools and the Business Administrator Board Secretary present the following motions to the Linden Board for approval, motions 1 through number 13.
Second. Any discussion? Roll call.
Mr. Dela Cruz.
Yes.
Ms. Pino.
Yes.
Ms. Thomas.
Yes.
Ms. Yulise.
Yes.
Ms. Armstead.
Yes.
And Dr. Burghammer.
Yes.
Moving on to Planning and Policy. The Planning and Policy Committee upon the recommendation of the superintendent of schools presents the following motion to the Linden Board of Education for approval. Item 1, I respectfully ask for a second.
Second.
Any discussion? Roll call.
Mr. Dela Cruz.
Yes.
Ms. Pino.
Yes.
Ms. Thomas.
Yes.
Ms. Yulise.
Yes.
Ms. Armstead.
Yes.
And Dr. Burghammer.
Yes.
At this time, we're gonna go to comments from the public. We do need to discuss our personnel in the back. So we can do comments from the public right now. You don't want to?
We are not gonna stay long in the back. We just have a couple issues that came up between Tuesday and Thursday, right? That we need to clear up in the back before we do the personnel report. Is that correct?
It's not personnel, though, so do they have to?
I don't know what issue you're talking about.
So we don't have any?
We have something that came up that is not gonna require a vote. So we can wait for the end. I don't know what else. If the board has any questions on the agenda, we can go in.
We don't have any. So then you could do personnel then.
Board, are there any questions regarding personnel? Is there anyone that needs to discuss anything?
The Personnel Committee upon the recommendation of the superintendent of schools presents the following motions to the Linden Board of Education for approval. All appointments and reappointments are contingent upon and may be modified based on student participation and the district's receipt of sufficient state school aid and other revenue funding. I would like to make a motion to approve items 1 through 58. I respectfully ask for a second.
Any discussion? No discussion. Roll call.
Mr. Dela Cruz.
I say yes to everything except, and item number 5, no to 18, no to 23, and no to 33.
Ms. Pino.
Yes.
Ms. Thomas.
Yes.
Ms. Yulise.
Yes.
Ms. Armstead.
Yes.
And Dr. Burghammer.
At this time, we will move on to comments.
Do you want people from the audience who can draw this to us? Listen, you know how I am, right? We have people who just got promoted or who just got their new job. The problem is that from the time you guys get a job, we not allowed to hear from you like that. So anybody who got promoted or who got a new job and would like to introduce themselves to the board, we'd love to hear from you.
Gonna make sure. Good evening, Board of Education and Superintendent Perkins. I am Frank Manitti. I'm the newly appointed vice principal at school number four.
All right.
I just wanted to, of course, introduce myself and personally thank you all for this opportunity and believing in me and giving me this chance. I had a little bit of time to reflect on my career here in Linden. And oddly enough, it began at school four in 2011, right out of college. Mr. Cataline, Tony Cataline was the principal then. And he started bringing me in as a per diem substitute. I eventually was a one-on-one kindergarten classroom. And then that same year, I took over as a third-grade long-term leave teacher. And then that sort of got me started. I've spent my whole career here in Linden. I've never even subbed anywhere else. So really, I'm just grateful and proud to work in a district that has supported me personally, professionally, and has given me the tools to get to this point where I am now, starting as a sub, what's that, 13 years ago or so, to now being appointed vice principal. So really, I'm just grateful and very happy to be here. And I really look forward to the upcoming school year and the challenges ahead, and looking forward to working with all of you as well as the year goes on and years go on. So just thank you again. And it's truly my privilege to be able to serve in this position. So thank you very much. Very much appreciated. Thank you.
Good evening to Linden Board and good evening to Superintendent Perkins. My name is Jeffrey Wade. I'll be starting a new position at Extracurricular Activities Advisor in Linden in the Athletic Department. I really, really am overwhelmed and very happy to receive this position. I really feel like I'm the right person for the job. I've been doing sports in Linden for over 40 years. So I'd just like to thank the board for giving me the opportunity to showcase and my abilities to uplift the community in athletics and academics. Thank you.
Mr. Wade. I remember, you know, my daughter is a special ed, was a special ed student.
Yes, ma'am.
And I remember the first time she came into school, you were at the door welcoming her. And I turned to you and I said, you know, this is my daughter. I wasn't on a board or anything. But I said, this is my daughter, and she special needs. And you looked at me and you says, I got this. I will look after your daughter. And I never, ever forgot that. Thank you very much.
No problem. You're welcome. Thank you.
Good evening. My name's Rachel Mifsud. I am the new high school art teacher. I'm just very grateful to be here. And it was a pleasure meeting you, Ms. Perkins, last week. And I'm just looking forward to a year full of art-making, creativity, and just empowering every student through the arts. Art is my passion. I believe that art education is just a huge component to academia. So I'm thrilled to be here. Thank you.
Good evening, Ms. Perkins and the whole Board of Education. Nice to meet all of you. My name is Maribel Amjari. And I rejoice your staff being an aide at the ESL teacher. And I'm so rejoiced to have met with some of you earlier and prior. Looking forward. Thank you. Anyone online? Anyone online?
Okay. Board, we are going to have to make a motion to pass the blue paper that we have because we did not include that. So this would be going...
Into executive?
I'm sorry?
We have to go into executive?
No, just to vote on it because it's not in here. So this is under personnel.
And if you have questions? Okay.
Just go ahead.
I would like to make a motion to approve the missing agenda items. I would respectfully ask for a second.
Any discussion? Roll call.
Mr. Dela Cruz.
Yes.
Ms. Pino.
Yes.
Ms. Thomas.
Yes.
Ms. Yulise.
Yes.
Ms. Armstead.
Yes.
And Dr. Burghammer.
Okay. At this time, we're gonna go to comments from the public. Members of the public desiring to make a public comment may come forward at this time. For those watching online, if you wish to make a comment or question or ask a question, please utilize the raise your hand feature on the online meeting platform. Please begin your comments by stating your name and address. Individuals are invited to speak on one topic at a time. And no individual will speak more than once until all individuals so desiring have spoken once. The public is reminded that to ensure the efficient and orderly operations of the meeting, members of the public will be limited to speaking on items for three minutes.
Craig Halloran, 120 Donaldson Place, gets the first question. The school's security cameras that show pictures from around the schools, if they pick up any form of crime being committed in the area, are they required to turn that information over to the police department?
Yes.
Okay. Thank you.
Ms. Donna.
Hi. Donna Hernandez, 133 Princeton Road. I guess a couple months ago, it was brought up about students and transportation. I know a couple parents had asked that... I know there's a cutoff with busing for students. And someone was gonna look into if a student wasn't able to get bussed, but they were maybe a block or two away from that bus stop, and if there was room on that bus, then we can try and expand it. I haven't heard anything. I don't know if anybody brought that up to transportation.
Ms. Garcia, is that possible?
There is a radius that you have to be outside of in order to qualify for busing. That's accurate. I don't know that we can waive that. I haven't been a participant in any discussions on that. But I'll look into to see what our options are and what other districts are doing with respect to maybe trying to find ways around that. And I'll have a report for you at the next meeting.
All right. Because I know it was brought up that students are using the New Jersey Transit buses.
Right.
And I think they might, I don't know if they have student discounts or if that's something that can be looked into also that could help our students.
I don't know the exact rate. I think it's like a mile for maybe like height.
I think it's like a mile for maybe like high...
2.2 miles.
It's two for high school, and then it's a different one for... But I think, I do believe there are some towns where, if you're inside that radius, let's say you have to cross like a really busy street in order to... I know that some districts try to make arrangements to avoid putting their students in situations where they have to cross dangerous intersections and things of that nature. So I will get confirmation for you on that, and I'll have it at the September meeting.
Okay, thank you.
Good question.
Good evening. My name is Dr. Olivero, principal of school number four. First and foremost, I would like to extend my deepest thanks to Mrs. Colvis, our vice principal, who will be transitioning to school number one as their new vice principal. Over the past five years, you have been an integral part of our leadership team. Your dedication and hard work have made a profound impact on our entire school community. You've been a loyal and steadfast partner in navigating the many challenges and successes that we've encountered together. We wish you the best in your future endeavors. You will always be a cherished member of our school four family. Now, as we start a new chapter, it is with great optimism that I welcome our new vice principal, Mr. Frank Manitti. I am confident your knowledge and leadership will be an asset to our school. I am looking forward to the positive impact you will have on our students, staff, and community.
Buckle up, Frank.
Thank you.
Hello, Board, and hi Superintendent. My name is Essence Myrick, 532 Princeton Road, and I am the VP, the PTA, I'm vice president here at...
Can you speak up a little more, we can't hear you.
Can you hear me?
No.
No?
Can you hear me now?
Yes, yes we can.
Essence Myrick, 532 Princeton. I am the PTA, Vice President here at School One. I have a child with special needs, and I have some concerns about the shortage of teachers and qualified therapy support for the special education programs. And I've heard so much about the general education initiatives, as well as the ELL initiatives, and I was just curious to learn what initiatives you guys have in place for, to address these needs and enhance support for the special education programs. Additionally, I'm interested in the strategies aimed at resolving the shortage of specialized teachers, as well as therapists in the special education program here in Linden.
One of the things that we did this year and we're continuing is to try to appeal to those teachers out there. We did a job fair that was successful. It was our first time doing it to bring on teachers, and we were able to hire more teachers. Is there a deficit around the nation in regards to special education teachers? There are. So one of the things that we're doing to start the school year is that we have our paraprofessionals. They're hired specifically for students with special needs. They've been in the classrooms longer than many, and so we're going to be moving them around into any of those classrooms that do not have a certified teacher in there at this point, as we're still continuing to reach out to retain those specialists. We've also partnered with outside firms that provide substitutes into our district, but we're looking specifically for those that are maybe retired special education teachers. So we have our, while someone may not want a full-time job, we're looking specifically at those that are out there that are, that have the mastery skill. So those are the three areas that we're trying to increase as well as retain until we fully get those certified staff. Okay?
Hello, Ms. Blocker.
Good evening. Look here for the blocker, 35 East Elizabeth Avenue, LEA Vice President. First, I wanted to say congratulations to all the new employees in their new positions. Just want you to know that the LEA will continue to build partnerships with the school and the community. We have two programs, PEP, which is Public Education and Partnership, and Families and Schools, working together with students. So, thank you and have a good evening.
Anyone online? Now moving on to new and unfinished business. Is there anything that the Board would like to bring up? Alright. At this time, I'd like to make a motion for us to go into executive session, and respectfully ask for a second.
We're not gonna be taking action when we come out, so if you guys wanna go home, you're not gonna miss anything.
John Cameron will call, he's not here.
We could do the roll call for him now.
Can I do roll call?
Everybody but John.
Okay, come on, I'm gonna do roll call for you, John. Roll call, sir. I'm done, John.
I'm bringing it so that it keeps everyone focused.
And then you just bring one.
Roll call.
Roll call.
Mr. Dela Cruz.
Yes.
Ms. Pino.
Yes.
Ms. Thomas.
Yes.
Ms. Yulise.
Yes.
Ms. Armstead.
Yes.
And Dr. Burghammer.
Yes.
Alright, at this time, I'd like to go back to the superintendent's report.
Thank you. My apologies earlier, I did not mention that we do have, we're saddened to learn of a death in our district. Roy Nunez Jr. was hired by the Linden Board of Education in 1965 as a teacher of mathematics. During his 30 years here in the district, he taught mathematics at McManus Middle School and Linden High School. He retired in 1992. Mr. Nunez passed away in July of 14th, 2024. So as always, may peace and love be with his family and friends, and know that we appreciate all that Mr. Nunez did for the Linden Public Schools District, and may he rest in peace. And then we also have retirements. Joseph Daniel, he started his career in 1986, and he worked as a custodian and reporting custodian at school number nine and 10 for 38 years. He plans to retire this upcoming January. Janine Godarian started her career in 2008, and she has worked as a special education resource teacher at McManus Middle School for 16 years, and she retired in July. Susan Rothenhauser started her career in 1988, working as a Title I math teacher at Soul Middle School, and she plans to retire in November. I'd like to thank all three staff members for their service and dedication to all of our students within the district. On behalf of the Linden Public Schools, job well done, and we expect to hear you roar for the rest of your retirement days, and know that we appreciate all that you have done. Thank you, and that will conclude the superintendent's report.
You, Superintendent Perkins. At this time, we'd like to ask any board members if they have any comments? No? Okay, at this time, I'd like to ask for a motion to adjourn tonight's meeting. Second, roll call.
Mr. Dela Cruz.
Yes.
Ms. Pino.
Yes.
Ms. Thomas.
Yes.
Ms. Yulise.
Yes.
Ms. Armstead.
Yes.
And Dr. Burghammer.
Yes.